I'd like to call this Special Board of Education meeting to order. Mr. Cruzell, you have the invocation in a moment of silence.
Let us pray for all the people affected by the recent hurricanes in Texas, Florida, Georgia, Puerto Rico, and the islands, and also the earthquake down in Mexico. Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, in the event of a fire or an emergency, please proceed out the doors, out to the parking lots. Kathy may have roll call, please.
Mr. Cruzell?
Here.
Principal Blonk?
Here.
Mr. Neville?
Mrs. Thurston?
Here.
Mr. Grady? Mr. Benye?
Here.
Mrs. Riley?
Here.
Mrs. Zungier?
Here.
Chairman Sarard?
Here. For the record, Mr. Neville had a personal engagement that he could not get out of. Superintendent's report. Mr. Dreszek?
Back to our board guests, and we do have a board guest.
Oh, excuse me, yeah, board guests, sorry. I stand corrected. Board guests.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we welcome Enfield High School Principal Eric Clark, Assistant Principal Connell Clark, JFK Middle School Assistant Principal Dave Akabuchi. Last year, the administrators from Enfield High School decided to investigate and explore alternatives to suspension for those students who committed lower-level offenses. The team created a concept called Wednesday Night School, which we've mentioned in board member meetings before, where they worked also alongside with Enfield Youth Services Program to pilot a program at Enfield High School. So tonight, we have the administration from Enfield High and JFK here to give you a little more detail on the program. So at this point, I'd ask Ms. Clark, Mr. Clark, and Mr. Akabuchi to come address the board.
Hello. I just want to highlight what Mr. Clark worked on last year. We're really proud of this program he implemented last year, and we're going to continue with this year. Obviously, you know, part of what we do as school administrators is create a safe and orderly learning environment, and part of our job is to address student behaviors. But he's come up with a way, not just to address the behavior, but also to get to the root of the problem and really correct the behavior in a positive way. So I just want to turn it over to Mr. Clark at this point.
Thank you, and good evening. Ms. Clark was very kind. I would love to take all the credit, but this was certainly a team effort. Last year, right around this time, we sat down at the table with a bunch of administrators from the middle school and high school, along with Enfield Youth Services, and just thought of some ideas of how we could reduce our suspension rates. And really, ideas started coming up. We started to think of solutions, and then I think collectively, as a whole, we did the toughest part, and that was executing it. We started last year in January of 2017, and the first time we had Wednesday night school, it looks totally different now. It has evolved over the six months that we've been running Wednesday night school, but it just took that initial step of getting it going and actually figuring out what we need to revise and go forward with that. So just to give you an idea, as Mr. Dreszek and Ms. Clark said, for some of these lower-level offenses, instead of giving the student a day of in-school suspension, we offered the opportunity of Wednesday night school. And I'd like to go into detail of what Wednesday night school looks like for these students. First off, Wednesday night school keeps the student in class, so they're receiving that direct instruction. However, they do have to take responsibility and accountability for their actions, and they have to serve three hours at Wednesday night school after school. So while their friends are either going off to sports or going home to work on their assignments or play with their friends, they are with us for three hours. And for the first 45 minutes, well, let me just give you an idea of the first Wednesday night school, so you can kind of see how this evolved. But the first Wednesday night school, we had the students, they were on their own for two hours. They could utilize the library or the main lobby to work on their academics. And then the final hour was a workout session with the administration. As I mentioned, it's evolved since then. The first 45 minutes, the students are responsible for meeting with one of their current teachers to work on extra help, a missing assignment, to hopefully give them a little bit more confidence with their academics there. From 2:45 to 3:45, they're responsible to go to a mandatory study hall, which is where Enfield Youth Services comes into play. They have supplied us with a certified teacher to supervise that hour. We are lucky to have one of our math teachers as the supervisor during that hour. Students need to go to that classroom. There are computers in that classroom. They can work on research projects. But they also have the assistance of a certified math teacher. So many of them take advantage of the math teacher there to get extra help with. This math teacher is also well-versed in the Alex program, which you guys are familiar with, the Mastery Base program. So if students are working on that, they can log into a computer and continue to work on that. Within that hour, another great opportunity that we have for the students is Enfield Youth Services sends one or two therapists over, and they pull the kids out for five to 10 minutes, and they talk about just making good choices with the students. So it's an individual session, if you will, where they just talk about making good choices, and they reflect on the behavior that basically got them to the program. It's great because, you know, there's a stigma, I believe, around therapy, and this introduces students to therapy in a non-threatening way. And we've actually seen students come out of those sessions saying, oh, that wasn't so bad. And they've continued on with that, maybe outside with their parents, you know, onboard. Then the last hour is where the administrative team comes and grabs them, and this hasn't changed since the first session. We take them down to the gym, and we work out with them. Mr. La Mesa has his ab workout going there that they can partake in. They can also use the treadmill, the elliptical, or the free weights. And really, the kids are motivated by this. We just ask that they break a sweat, whatever they want to do. And this is really an opportunity for the administrators to get to know some of these students that with 1,600 kids in the building, we may not know. I'll give you a perfect example. We held our first Wednesday night school last week, and I was able to speak with one of the kids that was there. I found out that he plays the trumpet in our band. I found out that his favorite class is English. He loves Mr. Mazon and Mr. Kuchar. He also likes PE with Mr. Barnes. It just so happened that Mr. Barnes just finished cross-country practice, stepped in, and had a quick conversation with this student. Student's looking to get into the military after school. And the other thing, he wasn't sure what was going on in the winter, and we mentioned wrestling. The next day, I had the opportunity to introduce him to Coach Beeler, so we had a conversation right in the hallway. And even before that, in the hallway, I saw him, and I was able to refer to him by his name. Prior to that day, I didn't know him. So it's basically just another set of eyes on these students. And, you know, we're able to continue to check in with them. The neat thing was, so that was Thursday. Friday, I had my back turned, and he came up and said hi to me. So he said, hey, Mr. Clark. So it was just nice to build a relationship with a student that, you know, understands that he has another trusting individual in the building, where we are very proud of. And actually, I will mention one last thing with this student. At the end, I told him, I said, listen, next week, you don't have to have your dean tell you, you have to come to this. This has also been seen as an intervention, too. So some students just sign up because they want to come. They want that academic help, and they want to work out. And now, we're thrilled that JFK is going to be starting their own program as well. And Mr. Akabuchi is here to talk a little bit about when that's going to start, and maybe any similarities or differences that they have.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. The program is basically run off of the last statement he made about the program. We're lucky enough to also have Youth Services providing us with a certified teacher. Not only is she certified in math, but she's also certified in special education, which we're really happy about that as well. We have ideas, things that we'd like to do a little differently, especially emphasizing the reflection piece, the wellness piece, and establishing those positive, appropriate relationships with students is extremely important at the middle school age. We're very excited that Mr. Clark and the high school has piloted this program so that they could work out some of the things that we needed to see. We're hoping to start this program mid-October, first week, mid-October, somewhere in there. We have students who are lined up, but not just for behavioral reasons. We also are looking to improve attendance, and we're hoping that this will, you know, help with that, along with academics. You know, students who are looking to get into this program because they need the extra help, they want the extra help, they want a different teacher, they want a different view on how to handle math, the teacher that they're working with, maybe this teacher will do it a different way, and it might click for them. And then hopefully, we'll get to a point, like Mr. Clark said, where we have students who want to come because they want to just improve. And we're very excited to get it started this year. We're very hopeful that we're going to have some of the same success that the high school had, and establish those connections with our students that we think will carry them on and through high school. Thank you.
Any questions?
What's the maximum amount of students that you can accommodate in one evening session?
At the high school, we've seen the greatest amount of success when it's under 10. And that's, we cap it at 12 right now, but normally, it's between four and eight students.
When it begins at JFK, if a student wanted to come and they were having issues with another subject, would they be able to, or is right now it just focus on math?
No, certainly, it would be any subject. And the teacher is fortunately currently at JFK and co-teaching in all subjects. So she's going to be very familiar specifically with the seventh-grade curriculum in all subject areas, but she's done all grades at the middle school level, and she's very comfortable with whether it's sixth, or eighth, or seventh, in any subject. So we're very excited about her.
So you said that some students who get ISS have the option to come to this, right? And then other students just want to come on their own accord, correct? So say you have students that repeatedly go to ISS and maybe are not taking the program the way they should be. What would the next steps for that be? Do they just go to ISS, or?
Well, just from last year, we had 70 participants go through the program. Again, some were just because they wanted to be there.
Right.
But we had 45 different participants.
Gotcha.
So if, I'm not going to sit here and say, the one-time fix is Wednesday night school.
That's right.
And, you know, when I was a teacher, it wasn't just one detention. I had students for several detentions before it got through to them. So our motto is, we're not going to give up on these students, and if it takes two or three days of Wednesday night school to hopefully work with them, and like I said, building that relationship and keeping an eye on them on a weekly basis is somewhere where we would go for our next step. But it's not a one-shot deal by any means.
Right. I just, I think that the concept is a wonderful concept, because I think that, you know, oftentimes there's something missing that the students need, and they can certainly find it through the counselor, I mean, even through exercising and building a rapport, whether you're, you know, doing cardio or not. I mean, you're still with somebody, and you're building a rapport, and you may find even a new friend that's a student. I just hope, you know, that the middle school kids, due to the maturity levels being a little different, that I hope that it has as much success in the middle school that it seems to have had in the high school, so.
And I think that's where that extra hour in the end comes into play, where we might not lift free weights and do elliptical machines, but we may play team-building games and things of that nature. That might be more age-appropriate and help in that area.
Well, hopefully, if the rest passes, someday you will be possibly using elliptical machines and stuff in a facility. But, okay, so that's what I was asking, but I think that the concept is really good, because I know people really want to see more partnerships with the town side and the school side and Enfield Youth Services. I think that what you're doing, to me, I think is a really good feature, and it's, like you said, it's kind of like breaking down the barriers and really helping the students that you might not otherwise know, because, you know, they're either kind of just straight and narrow, quiet, but they do have some difficulties here and there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
First, it's a great programmatic alternative to the students. What's the parental buy-in for this program? Like, how are parents working together?
I'm sorry.
How do the parents work, like, are they buying into the program? Because I would see either parent consent, or parents saying, yes, this is working, no, this isn't working, change the program. Like, what's the parent's view on this program?
I would say the buy-in is much greater with the parents.
Right.
You know, when we're telling them that this is an opportunity for your student not to miss any instruction, they're all for it. Sometimes, we've got to sell the students, but the parents are all for it, and they're the ones that are having that conversation with the student afterwards as well, to kind of go over the program. And the program is told to the student as well. And so, as far as the parents, they are loving it. Great feedback from the parents so far.
And the staff, how are the staff chosen or designated for Wednesday nights? Is it someone had to apply for the spot, or is it, how's it given?
That's dealt through Enfield Youth Services.
Okay.
That's not hired by the Board of Eds.
All right.
Thank you.
I have one more question. So if a parent knows that their student is struggling, and they can reach out, maybe they reach out to the guidance counselor, maybe they reach out to their dean of students. Soon, you know, they'll have an avenue. So is that something that would even be recommended? So let's say that the parent said, you know, they're not interested in school, or they're struggling in the subject, Eagle Black, you know, I can't get them to find the teacher, Eagle Black. Is that something that you're actually offering up to parents, saying, look, we have this Wednesday night school, and, you know, they can come to this? And so is that another way for parents to get their children involved?
Without a doubt. At Enfield High School and at JFK, they have the student assistance team, we have the student intervention team, and this is becoming more and more well-known throughout the school to where parents are asking us about, how can I get my student involved with Wednesday night school? So certainly, in PPTs, 504s, those are certainly interventions that we have used.
That's good to know, just being a parent and, you know, having friends that are parents. If I ever hear somebody, you know, talking to me about it, you know, I'll advise them to talk to the guidance counselor at Enfield High or middle school, at the middle school or the dean, and tell them that this is something that could help.
There's just one, you know, requirement. They can't bench press more than me. Because if they bench press more than me, then we don't want them there, so.
So you said that the cap was at 12. Do you think the program would work if it was more than 12, and you had another teacher to accommodate more students if there was a want for that?
Sure. I mean, that's why it's at 12. We want to make sure. If we go more than 12, then we're not able to build those positive relationships and the teacher in there. I mean, she's doing personalized assistance there, so if we had another teacher, then, you know, we could double that number to 24. But, you know, we also have the athletic teams and the weight rooms, and we want to make sure that, you know, we're a part of the community, we're not taking it over, so.
Yeah. Could we have, you know, next year, or like, you know, well, I don't know if I'll be sitting here, but I'd love to get an update from the middle school in the spring and see how that worked, because I think that, obviously, you sparked a lot of our interest, because it's just, it's really nice to hear when you guys are embracing the students and trying to make it better for them, so.
I commend you for the idea. It's a positive twist on an interesting situation, but it's one program in school that I hope you don't require many to show up to.
That's the goal. That's the goal. So, you know, just, I'll be honest with you, last Wednesday, we had one student. But I truly feel like we've made a difference with that one student. So I agree with you. If the numbers are down, that's a good thing. But hopefully, though, they are at 12, because students are just utilizing it as an intervention and a motivation, as Mr. Akabuchi said.
That's what I like, the intervention motivation, because, you know, you said, like, there's 1,600 kids in the school, and when you're new to the school, or you just move into town, or sometimes you feel like you're one of 1,600 in the school, and same for the parent. And so, you know, I would almost love for it to be utilized as a tool for the parents, too, just to be able to get their kids, just that little bit of extra sometimes that we need with our kids, to get them through the week or through a month, even, every now and again. So, so thank you.
So, before you go, I know one of the ideas behind this was, usually when we get ISS students, they tend to be the same kids. Usually, when it gets to the board level, when we're sitting on expulsion hearings, we see that it is the same kids. And one of the goals was to curb the recidivism. Are you, I know it's still early, but are you seeing any trends in that direction where the recidivism rate is dropping? Where the early intervention actually is working?
As mentioned, yes. To answer your question, yes. I think we're, we may be talking about two different students. I think, you know, not to get too much into this, but the ones that are coming to you are a little bit more severe infractions. These are lower-level ones, but at the same time, deserving of a day of in-school. And yes, like I said, I have the numbers, and again, many of them, we did have some repeaters, but not as many as you would have thought. And we are, you know, we're continuing to analyze that data, because we don't only want to analyze that, but we want to analyze how they're doing academically as well. And I think there's a correlation there as well. So that is the goal, to, you know, not only improve their behavior, because we think that will also improve their academics as well.
Well, it's like when we refer someone to the academy, it's actually helped them a lot. I mean, it's an academic program.
Right.
And a lot of times, it's a one-shot deal there, and they're back on track.
Yes.
So, no, I'm thrilled. I'm a big guy for early interventions. The sooner that you address a problem, the better. And if you're offering additional services for those that are on the cusp, great. Continue to good work, and by all means, whoever's sitting on the seat, please come back and update them, because I think this is a program worth modeling, and I think this is a program worth continuing. So keep up the good work, guys. Awesome, awesome.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you for coming.
Before they leave, these two gen, they won't say it, they're a little too humble, so I'll say it. These two gentlemen are giving themselves enough credit for the creation and the implementation of this. This wasn't something that we asked them to do. This wasn't something we directed them to do. This happened at the building level. This happened amongst talking to colleagues about what they can do to help kids. And Connell and Dave, I know with Erin's support, even last year when she was assistant principal, they went above and beyond trying to help reach those kids that needed it the most. So they deserve all the credit for this. I just wanted the board to understand, this wasn't something that was a central office directive, saying, go figure out a new program for us. These guys, quite honestly, they didn't tell us it was up and running, but we appreciate that.
Awesome. Good job. Thank you. Awesome, awesome, awesome.
Zero-dollar initiative?
No, you go.
This is awesome. Now the superintendent's report. Mr. Dreszek?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our two student representatives are here, so if you wish to start with them.
Start from the furthest, and then move in.
So, we have homecoming in a week, and everyone's pretty excited about that. We have, it's kind of like a three-day celebration. Also, there's, I have some stats from the sports teams, only a few of them, but girls' soccer is currently with four wins, zero losses, and one tie, and the field hockey team is undefeated. And the band has their first competition next Saturday.
Awesome. Awesome.
This Friday is Rainbow Day, started by the Enfield High Gay Street Alliance to show our support for the LGBT community of our school. Like Megan said, for homecoming weekend, Eagle Fest will be held from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM on Friday on the football field. We hope to see a lot of people there, a good turnout. The Enfield High Parade will be at 9:00 AM on Saturday. It goes down Pearl Street to the school. And we're all looking forward to homecoming weekend, and we hope to see a lot of people there.
Thank you. Mr. Dreszek?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff Professional Development Days, all Enfield Public Schools teachers will attend a half-day PD session tomorrow, which is Wednesday, the 27th. Full-day PD on Tuesday, October 10th. Students will be dismissed early with lunch on Wednesday, tomorrow, and they will not be in session on October 10th. Enfield High School Open House, they'll hold their first parent-teacher conferences on Thursday, September 28th. The second parent-teacher conference night will be held on November 9th. And second to last, Columbus Day, all schools and offices will be closed on Monday, October 9th, for observation of Columbus Day. And the last thing that's not on my report, but I was asked to give another update on the Power School transition, so I've got some quick statistics I will read to you as far as an update on where we are, and we'll try to answer any questions I can, if permitted. But as of today, all teachers and staff have successfully logged in and registered into Power School. If you remember last week, at our last board meeting, we were at about 95%. We are now finally at 100% effective today. Our primary and intermediate teachers are entering their daily attendance. As they transition to standards-based report cards and grading, they'll be working with their building administrators on how to use Power School for the inputting of grades and data. Secondary teachers are entering period attendance and inputting grades. They've met with Power School and administrators, so progress reports and report card development for October is on schedule. The special education module is being updated daily with historical data transfer plan for completion this week. I mentioned the IEPs last time, we're all still web-based in the cloud, but we still have access to them. All IEP forms have been updated, and all of our, the necessary reporting requirements to the state of Connecticut are all up and running. Teachers have successfully started using Unified Classroom model. We've had a meeting with Power School, along with the high school administration, about the Power School parent and student porthole. Now, there are a couple of planned presentations beginning this week. The first presentation will be Thursday at Open House by Principal Clark, who'll be doing a presentation on Power School on the parent porthole for parents. Clerical staff members and administrators have reviewed the process and all the needs for implementation, and the rollout for student access will start with seniors next week. Lastly, JFK will be next. Once we've ironed out all the procedures at the high school, the process is to roll out the middle school. One last piece that I didn't have until recently, and I thank Ms. Clark for sharing with us. Ms. Clark also took an additional step by offering parent sessions by the administrative team on three different occasions. I have those dates for you. It's October 3rd, from 2:30 to 4:30; October 6th, from 3:30 to 6:30; and October 10th, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. That's on the Professional Development Day. That Enfield High School will have an administrative team available for any parent that wishes to come in to get an update or some sort of training module on how to use the parent porthole. At that point, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Well, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Okay. So October 6th, what time?
3:30.
Okay.
To 6:30.
To 6:30?
Yeah.
And then October 10th, when?
9:00 AM to noon. That's the Professional Development Day.
Right. But you, parents can go in and learn how?
Parents can come in, yes. There's no students that day.
Right.
So that's why we're able to offer a time for morning for parents.
Okay. So next week, hopefully?
Hopefully.
We're starting with the senior class?
They are doing the rollout. The first presentation will be Thursday night at Enfield High Open House. Ms. Clark will hold a parent work session.
Yeah.
With the hope that, beginning of next week, we're ready to go.
Okay. And you're going to start with seniors, juniors?
Correct. Seniors will begin first next week, and then, once we're through grades 12 through 9, we will then roll it in with grade 8, and follow the same process at JFK.
Okay.
But just to add, I double-checked from last meeting when I gave an update, we do have a project chart that Power School provides us. I actually called our Power School representative with Mr. Barasa, just so we had two witnesses to say that we are actually above, ahead of schedule from what they anticipated when we had done the rollover. I just wanted confirmation of that.
No, I'm okay, as long as I just can tell people, because I get a lot of questions about it, and basically want to tell my junior that I can check his grades anytime I want. So that's more of my motivation.
Speaking from experience, as a father of a high school freshman, it is a great determinant tool for me to use for early intervention.
Yes.
If we want to call it that. But, and we will also follow up with school messenger updates for parents, too, once these dates are official.
That's fine. If I can just, if people are asking, they want to, like I said last time, they're wondering if they missed something going home, they didn't get it. So I will just be able to update them, and that was the information I was looking for. So, thank you.
We'll send the Power School, we'll send, sorry, we'll send the school messenger update with these dates as well.
On behalf of the board, please extend our gratitude to Mr. Barasa. I know he's been working diligently at this. He's gone over and above on that. He deserves a lot of credit, and thanks to everyone else who's been working on it, but but please make sure Guy knows that we noticed it, so, there you go.
Thank you.
Okay. Audience?
There's no one signed up.
Sensing none, moving on. Board member comments, Mr. Cruzel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few things, we had the Family Day there a couple Sundays ago. Thank you to Amy Woodrow for putting that together, and it was a great event. We had the, through the chair to the superintendent, I passed on some information to Michelle Middleton from the Boy Scout STEAM truck. There was a, they had a truck there for, for the Boy Scouts for STEAM, and they had different stations set up in the, in the vehicle, and, and she gave me some information I passed on to Michelle Middleton. They wanted to come in someday to give us a presentation on the program and everything, so she's going to reach out to you on that.
Really?
And then we had the Rachel's Challenge there last Wednesday, that was a very moving event. If you ever, if you ever have a chance to see that, that's, it's very powerful, and it was a shame there wasn't more people there, but they, they did do the, the stuff through the school also, so it was great to see. And then today, we did the Bagging for the Hunger at ShopRite. We crushed some eggs, and we did all that good stuff, so. But that, a lot of people were there for that, so it was a great turnout, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzel. Ms. Leibig?
Oh, I didn't know you were calling me. I also went to Family Day on the Green. JFK, kudos to them, they had snow cones, cotton candy, popcorn, and then I got to, to talk to some of the ERFC folks, the Pell, the parent leadership. It was, it was a great day. The other thing I wanted to mention, because I feel like it's kind of an oversight sometimes, but, Megan, our student representative, plays the trumpet for the Enfield High Eagles, and she is out there every Friday night, along with the football team, doing the halftime show, which, by the way, we went to a school last week, and they didn't have the band do a halftime show, and I missed it. And I heard "Awful Like an Eagle" by Steve Miller-Bann the other day. And it just made me think of the band, because every time you go, the band does something, or the football team does something, that they play it. So, I would just like to highlight Megan, because she does really well with the band, and I saw her, and I think I mentioned one time at a board meeting, she played the trumpet at the Riley's Dance Recital, and she's a very talented musician. Actually, her whole family is very talented musically, so. And there's two younger sisters coming, so. But kudos to you, Megan, because I know it's a commitment, and you're carrying AP classes, and you're doing band, and you're competing, and it's a, it's a heavy workload. Then you come and you get to deal with us twice a month, so. But kudos to you. Other than that, I really don't have too much, so.
Thank you, Ms. Leibig. Ms. Thurston.
Yeah, Steve, that, that song you just said?
Yeah.
Mr. Dreszko can sing that at graduation.
Should he wear the eagle mascot?
Yes, there you go.
Mr. Longy wouldn't give that up.
We are expecting a song, just so you know.
Seniors would love it.
I'm, I'm sure they would, especially having their own principal singing. There you go.
I do have a question to the superintendent through the chair. The Wednesday night school is, I know it's at the high school, it's starting the middle school. Is there any thought eventually going down to the elementary school?
Possibly, at some point. I, I think it's still in its infancy at the secondary school level, and it's deterrent for some of the offenses, the lower-level offenses, like Mr. Clark said, so. Yeah, luckily, you don't see as many of those at the elementary school, but it's, it's something to, depending on how, how it progresses.
I'm just curious.
Thank you, Ms. Thurston. Ms. Rainier?
Uh, diddle those before me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rainier. Ms. Riley?
Okay. Yeah, ditto on a lot of things. This was my first time going to Rachel's Challenge, and it was moving and powerful. I went home and bawled my eyes out for about an hour. If anybody ever does get a chance to go, you should definitely go. It will open your eyes up a lot. Open House was last week for K through 2. I got to go to Henry Barnard and help out. I represented first readers that night, and let me tell you, it was awesome. They had all of the, they had math, art, Lego, ERFC, and Enfield Youth Services. We're all in the gym, and all the parents and students just came all the way through each table, and it ran really smoothly, so they did a good job out there. And the only other thing I wanted to say was, I wanted to give a shout-out to the Enfield Public Library. They have a lot of resources there, and today, I went with my daughter to Story Hour, and it was great. They did a art project, and they read, and so I hope that the public utilizes the library for all of its wealth of activities they have there. And that was it.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. Ms. Zangare?
Okay, I also attended the Rachel's Challenge last week, and I've seen it many times, and it never loses its value, or its punch, or its importance. It's, I really appreciate the school that we have that. I attended the Craig Council in Hartford, and they discussed about the new opening of the Museum Academy. Also, most of the meeting, we discussed the catastrophic effect of all the budget cuts with the state, and how it's going to affect not just Craig's schools, but all our communities. And everyone's devastated about it, and so there's lots of chat, and everyone, we don't know how it's all going to turn out. Family Day on the Green was good, I got to talk to a lot of people, and like Walter, I went to Bag Hunger today, and many of you were all there, so we had a good time. Walter's the one that broke all the eggs. He put a gallon of milk on top of the eggs. I'm like, Walter?
Nelson? Thank you, Ms. Zangare. Eagle Fest, if you can attend, please come down. Like I said, when we opened the school, one of the comments I had made at the grand opening ceremony was that the, the new high school is the center of our community. The days, that's where our focus should be. You know, there's a Beach Boys song, "Beach, go to your school." This is our school. This is the school that we need to be true to. The more community involvement, the better. We have a beautiful building, we have a beautiful campus. Take advantage of it and, and support the teams. Support the kids. That's, that's the new center. It's not, the, when, eight years ago, we had eight centers. Now we have one. And, and just focus on that, and everybody, I think, I think the town will get better over time. There's always room for improvement. We've got a great town, but I think it'll get better. Also, the Wednesday night school thing, I think, is amazing. That our, our staff came up with that on their own, that they took the initiative to do that with partnership with, with services, is, is a statement, again, it's a testament to the kind of people that we hire here. And, and they need to be recognized for that, because they did do this on their own, and addressing a potential issue. But I, I'm impressed every time that something like this comes up to our attention, and, and kudos to those guys. For those of you who wonder why we moved the meeting, it's because the town hall air conditioning unit wasn't working, and it's a little hot, so we decided to move it here, so that's why it's a special meeting, not a regular meeting. It was the only way we could do it legally. Support the teams, I heard the soccer team did real well. Again, I was getting a play-by-play over my phone while I was working. I wanted to go, unfortunately couldn't attend, but I, I got the load on, it was, it was, it was a very competitive game, so, we're all good. Unfinished business, anything? New business, anything? Board committee reports? Building committee, no meeting?
No, no meetings, so.
Curriculum committee?
We had a meeting, and, and, well, Tim's not here, so somebody's going to fill in for him. But we had a meeting, and we went over, yeah, we went over, Michelle Middleton. I got some, see, I'm on the spot here. Michelle Middleton brought up, has presented us a slideshow that she's working on to present to the board in the, in the next couple of weeks, so we're going to use something on that.
Leave that, leave you in suspense.
Okay. Thank you, Tim.
Oh, under, I, I guess this would fall under curriculum, and I'm going to direct this to the superintendent. The K to 2 schools, do we have an average number of where we've been at this year?
For?
For the number of students in classrooms.
Enrollment?
Enrollment, yeah, average classroom.
Average classroom. The official enrollment isn't official till October 1, but I've, you must have read my mind, because I always keep it on me, just to make sure we're in the ballpark. Our average class size is for K to 2 this year is 19.28. To put in perspective, the last time we had reported to the board last spring was May 24th, the last time the question was asked. We projected the average classes for K to 2 to be 20.79, so we're a little lower than what we had anticipated.
Fairly.
To put it, to deeper perspective, the number last year for the October 1 enrollment was 20.45, so our class sizes at K 2 level are, are smaller this year.
Okay, thank you. Finance committee, anything to report?
We had a meeting, and we have, we have something to present later.
Okay.
Somebody has to give it to me, so I don't have to.
Leadership, there was no meeting. Policy committee?
Actually, Mr., I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt your committee reports. There was a question that was going to go to leadership, but then you asked me to remind you that it was a full-board possible discussion with regards to parking.
Oh, that's right.
Parking at Enfield High School?
Go ahead, bring it up.
It was brought to our, so the board's aware, we currently charge students who park at Enfield High School $100 a year for a parking pass. We had done that, that number substantially higher than it had been in the past, but that was kind of geared toward, because of the construction, the lack of parking spaces. Obviously, no construction's completed, and we looked, and the high school's done some research with surrounding towns on what they charge, and we are substantially higher. They're getting to the point now where they're beginning to charge the students. So, we had asked, either through leadership or through the entire board, if they would like to reconsider the dollar amount that we're charging students to park at Enfield High School.
Yes.
Yeah. I'm not, it was a gray area for me. I don't recall if Dr. Gallagher or Dr. Schuman actually set the amount. I believe at one point in time, the board actually set the amount, so I wanted to come to you to tell you that either A, I'm going to change it, or do you want to change it? But $100 a family is, is a bit excessive, since we have more ample parking than we've had in the past.
$2.50.
What's the average for the state?
Yeah, what's the average for the state?
It's about $30.
$30?
The money goes to the student?
Money goes to student, in years past, and this is way, way back, we used to use the money to buy, offset the cost of agenda books for students.
Agenda books.
Remember the old agenda books? We don't do that any longer. So, some of that money goes into offsetting some student activity accounts. But at the same time, we have to balance, we do have some students who won't do it, because it is, it is a substantial amount.
$35?
She said $35.
I hear 40.
35.
35?
You don't need action, I just, I'm going to change it, but I wanted you to know.
35. Policy committee?
Uh, we met two weeks ago. We completed the 9,000 series in policy. They have come back to us, we will finalize them tomorrow night. We brought them for the board for the next board meeting. It is a lengthy series, so that will get sent out to the board prior to our meeting, so we can all review the approved changes. Also, tomorrow night, we're meeting again, we're going to be tapping the zeros in the 100 series.
Any other committees?
Joint Facilities isn't meeting until after the election, so.
Any other committees?
Oh, and do we have an insurance meeting next, next week?
Yes.
We do.
The 3rd.
Next Tuesday, right? I believe it's scheduled for next.
At 4:30?
You have a better memory than I do. Yes, there is a joint insurance meeting next Tuesday, the 3rd, at 4:30 in the Enfield.
Okay. That's it.
Okay. Approval of the minutes, regular meeting minutes, September 12th, 2017. So vote. Motion made by Mr. Cruzel, seconded by Ms. Thurston. Any changes, discussion? None, show of hands? Approved. Any abstentions? Approval of accounts payroll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I found my copies. The finance, the finance committee met on September 19th, 2017, to review financial statements for the month of August, year-to-date, and to examine various documents related to finance. Our review concluded there is nothing significant to report to the board. Motion, I move we accept the superintendent's certification as follows. I hereby certify that in the month of August, total expenditures amount to $1,425,584.19, broken down between payroll totaling $465,745.05,